Good afternoon, we'll call to order. And Brian Venziano, I'd love to have you on mute and lead us through the pledge of allegiance along with me. Start it.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, roll call. I'm present. Haley? Tony?
Here.
James? Brian? Oh, you got unmute, but I saw you. Can you just say it, Brian, for the?
Here.
Okay, Debbie? And Dave? All right, we will now open it up for public comment. If you'd like to speak, please put it in the chat and I'll call on you. Just a reminder for the public, this is an opportunity for members to comment on agenda items and contribute info that may be interesting or ask clarifying questions. Did anybody want to do the public comment? Danielle Hagerty? Go ahead.
Thank you. So first, I just want to start with, I really appreciate Mr. Walker's communication with regards to the budget. Providing the initial information then follow-up questions, so I just wanted to say thank you. It looks like from the first time that we talked about the budget, a lot of work has been done, and so kudos to all the principals and everybody in their hard work. I did send a list of questions over to Mr. Walker and he's gotten me answers on many of them. I just had a couple of key ones that I wanted to follow up with today. One was, I was curious what the projections are for student enrollment next year. It looks like our peak enrollment was in fiscal year 22 where we had 1,393 students. And it looks like as of this year, we're at 1,339. Around, obviously, things change, so I was just curious what the trend is predicted for next year. Next, I had some questions about state agency clients. I realize that that's not an expense that's passed on to the town, but it does end up, I believe, sitting in our budget. And I was just curious how it's being budgeted for both on the expense and revenue side. And then lastly, I noticed on the ED 279 that recently was published that last year there were 88 teachers in our school, and it looks like this year in October, there were 85 teachers. I was curious why the difference between last year and this year, and also the budget that's currently being proposed, how many teachers are captured in that budget? Mr. Walker, do you have any questions for me about my questions, so I can clarify them for you?
David, sorry, unmute.
No, I, I think you've got what I've got, Danielle. I'll continue to, to provide answers to your other questions.
Danielle, did you have anything else to add?
I do not, thank you.
Any other public comments? I didn't see anyone else put in the chat or take themselves off video so that I could see. Okay, we will close public comment. I just wanted to circle back. Haley, are you present? And James, are you present? Okay. I will turn it over to you to get started.
I'm assuming you means me.
Yes, I, I think I'm not good with my mute unmute. You, David, yes.
Hey, are you, are you trying to get on the Zoom?
Oh, Brian, you're, I gotta mute you.
I'll let her know that.
Brian Venziano, please mute. Okay, David Walker, go ahead.
So we're, we're pretty much where we left off. At our last meeting, Danielle has, has brought up some issues that we're responding to. Brian Venziano sent me a number of questions yesterday morning, and we've responded to some of those, but we're still working on many of them. So the work continues. I would simply say that, you know, we need to continue to take a look at the non-payroll accounts. There are still some areas there that need clarification and perhaps adjustment. But when you look at the big picture, we still have a 2.4 million dollar gap need to fill.
You need to show that you can do everything.
I'm gonna, I'm going to mute everybody, or Alex, I'm asking you if you can mute everybody, please, and we're gonna have to, if you want to be able to speak, comment in the chat. Thank you, Alex.
So at the end of the day, we'll continue to ring out any potential changes, savings, hopefully, in the non-payroll budget. But as you saw from the numbers I provided repeatedly, the majority of this budget is payroll. That's the way schools operate, we're people-driven machines, so. The, the, in the end, the board will need to determine when they feel that they've done all they can do with this budget and then look at ways to bump revenue, whether you wish to use monies from your, continue to use monies from your undesignated reserve, which is stands at about $943,000. You know, over the last two years, you've balanced this budget with a million dollars in FY '24 and 1.4 million in FY '25. So that leaves you with $943,000 that you could draw upon. But that is drawing that unfunded balance to a dangerously low amount, since that's the monies that we operate on. One of the questions that I was asked, I think by both, both Brian and Danielle, but I know Brian did. You know, the funding sources, federal funding sources, they don't send us a check. What they do is they tell us, so you have X number of dollars to spend for Title I. And we make a plan, they approve that plan for expenditures, and then we begin to expend that money. We only recover that money when we bill them for actual expenditures, so. Like any business, you do need to have some operating funds, because you buy inventory, you put it on your shelf. That's there until you sell it, you don't see it. The same with federal funds. They will buy our services, but we have to provide the services to children first, prove that to them, and then they will reimburse us for those expenses. So there is some level of need for an operating fund to, to make that happen. So you have the $943,000. You have reserve funds on deposit with the town of Herman for specific items that are somewhere in the million-dollar level, but they are very specified as to what they can be used for. But there are some funds that might, might be able to be used for some of the budget expenses that we have here. And then, of course, there's always the, in the end, you've got a budget that will be passed forward to the town council. And in order to, to fill that revenue hole, it may require the town council to approve an increase in the local mill rate. So we will continue to work away at making sure that we're being good stewards of the local tax dollar in every way that we can. But there's still some work to be done by the school board to make sure they have put forth a school budget that supports programming that, that supports all of our students. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have about any of the information that I've shared over the last few weeks, which is quite a bit of information, so.
Thank you, David, for going over that, and I want to give the committee members an opportunity to be able to ask any questions of David at this time. Do you want us, like, raising our hand, or? Nope, go ahead. You could put it in the chat, or, nope, you go ahead.
So when I'm looking at the current budget and I see we're on track to expend around 17 and a half million or so, I'm trying to grasp how we're thinking we need a budget that's $21 million when we aren't even spending or on track to spend 18 million this current fiscal year, even with inflation. I, I can't quite get there. Can you help explain why we need that much inflation in this budget?
I guess I would have to see, you know, Haley, how you have calculated what, what we're on track to spend. There are so many variables, obviously, in that budget between now and June 30th, so. Some of those accounts do not get information until Jamie does a journal entry to show the expenditures. So I, I, I guess I would need to say, I, I, I would be very surprised if you ended up spending only, I say only, 17 million, whatever. That would be great if it did, because that would solve your problem. You'd have $2 million to, to throw towards another budget, but I, I don't believe that's the case at all. But I'd be more than happy to sit with you and, or sit with you and Jamie to, to take a look at how you've calculated where we're going to be in on June 30th.
Well, when I look at actual expenditures and I compare it to the last three or four years here, I have a, a, you know, year-end to date how your monthly total expenditure gets expended. So when I look at that average and I add that up over time, right now, you know, we're halfway through the, more than halfway through the year, and we've only well, I know we have a payroll cycle still, but we, we have, what, nearly $10 million still that hasn't been expended now. I don't want that to go be spent. That's not my goal. My goal is to say if we're averaging 1.2, 1.3 million dollars a month in expenditures, I'm just trying to figure out how we're getting to such an inflated budget. So my other question, unless somebody has one ahead of me here.
Go ahead.
Um, one thing that confuses me is when we put something in the budget, we'll use the fuel tank, for example, and that, say, say it's I think it's around $265,000, and that gets built into the budget, and that project is completed. That number never seems to go away. So if you look at the facilities, there's $75,000 that used to be in there, and it was in there as a van. Now it's in there for same price, but a different, it was for bus repairs or something. Numbers, if they're expended, should no longer be kept in the budget, and I, I know this is how other schools have done it too, and I, it's a question I keep bringing up, is if we've spent that money, it doesn't stay in the budget. It should fall away. Can you speak to that process?
I can't, because I'm not sure I understand, Haley.
So if you have something in the budget and then it's funded and it's completed, the following year, the budget should be $265,000 less than it was, in theory. Because the need still isn't there.
Well, is, it would have to be, are you saying that the same items are listed year after year?
I'm not saying it's listed as the same thing. I'm saying, once that dollar amount is built into the budget, it seems to stay in there, kind of like a placeholder, versus saying if we, if we expended $800,000 at the end of last year, and those things were purchased, but they don't need to be purchased again, then the budget should be down 800,000.
So I think you have to look at the, the current year budget, and we should be able to justify for you everything that's in there. They, they aren't the same projects over and over. There are recurring costs, but, but if you're talking about project costs, then the number may be similar, but the projects would be different, and we can certainly give you a list of anything that, that is not clear as to where that money is going to be expended, then certainly send me a, a list of that, and I will provide the full board with a list of what the expenditure, the expenditures would be under that line.
Yeah, it's hard on Zoom to ask questions, because I can't read the room or know who wants to ask and stuff, so I don't want to dominate the, the questions.
I'm, I'm mandating that, so please keep on asking your questions.
Do we have one person that's making a salary, but their salary is spread out over different roles in the budget?
That's, yes, that's very possible, where somebody could be working in two different departments or in two different roles.
So if you're like a transportation director, when you have one salary, but then you're all facilities person, you have a salary, is that what, for example?
That's a good example, and, and Jason's salary would be split over maintenance and transportation.
Okay. Is that also for the groundskeeper?
If, if they are employed with us in another role, such as maintenance or custodial, and they're doing groundskeeping too, yes. So it's simply the account in which, so if they worked 40 hours that week and 20 hours were custodial and 10 were maintenance and the other 10 were grounds, then it would be split out that way.
Okay. Is that part of their contract? To, to have that many roles? Well, I'm just thinking, when I look at salary, I see a salary line. I'm saying, okay, this is their salary for this role, and I don't disagree that if one person can do it all, I can understand. I just, I'm trying to grasp. I've seen that with a few other roles, and I've been trying to figure out why that's happening, so.
Well, we do have people who play, wear multiple hats here, that's for sure.
One question I had about the fuel cost. I did a 10-year analysis of fuel and what the costs were, and so we're currently at a rate of pre-2001, as far as what fuel is costing, and yet, in our current expenditure, I think it's around, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think the budget was up over $30,000. So they're asking for $94,000 in that budget line for, for fuel. But our fuel costs are lower than they've been in four years, and we're not even close to spending what we spent last year in fuel, so I'm wondering why there's so much money allotted there.
Well, fuel is one of those two, two, two different answers to that same question, Haley. One is, as you know, fuel costs are pretty volatile, and so we, we have to do our best at predicting what fuel costs will be for the FY '26 year, starting July 1 of, of this year, through June 30th of 2026. So there's a bit of crystal ball. We, we work with the, the suppliers to, to try to get that, but even suppliers at this point are a little hesitant to provide locked-in rates, so we, there is a bit of, of of a chance there that, that we're not, you know, we try to cover our bases, but we can't get anybody in, in March, or where are we, February of 2025 to lock our fuel prices in for the next year. So we're basing those numbers. The other is that obviously, there are different, you know, our fuel use varies slightly due to the buses that we're running and, and where we're going and the bus runs and whatever, but.
I, yeah, I didn't want him to speak, so I, I found where I was looking. So our current expenditure is around $30,000. Last year, year-end, we only spent 65, and yet, next year, we're asking for 95, roughly $1,000.
Yeah, I will, that's a, that's a fair question, Haley, and I will follow up with Jason Davis to see how he calculated that number. I mean, the, the, it's fine that you're asking the questions, I appreciate that. If, if you don't mind, after we're done here today, if you could send me the, those questions in an email, I'll be sure to add them to the, the lists of questions that I have, and because many times I just have to sort those questions out as to which department and, and make sure the right person is responding to the question. So, so, great question. If, if I, I will do my best to remember to talk with Jason about that, but, but I would appreciate if you, anybody today, not just you, Haley, but anybody who asks a question and I don't have an answer, just shoot me the email. david.walker@schools.herman.net, and I, I promise you, I will get an answer. I'll be on it. I'll get it done, so.
I mean, I guess the same is true with electric and oil. I'm seeing we're only spending about 83,000, yet I think it's 216 is budgeted. We just have these huge, huge variables. It's a lot of money, and if we're looking for ways to cut and saying, well, we're actually not really spending that, and, and prices are are down, at least on fuel right now. And we're one of the only schools that fuels, it has their own tanks, which is also a huge expenditure. That's, that's a whole nother can of worms, but.
Right, so I'm, I'm trusting that the way this is done, Haley, and if it isn't, it's the way it will be done, is I'm trusting that we're taking a look at consumption over past years, for example, heating oil. So you take a look at your consumption for the prior year or the prior three years, and you average that, and then then, then there becomes the piece of, so what's the price per gallon going to be next year? That's where the, the, the bit of the crystal ball work has to come in. But the, our consumption shouldn't change that, if you use a three-year average, that you're going to be pretty close on consumption. So the, the variable is pricing, and as you know, that's with fuel, you're talking probably one of the most variable commodities, other than eggs right now. That's probably one of the most variable commodities that there are. But I, I will follow up with Jason for both diesel fuel that we're running in our buses and heating oil that we're using in our schools, and and sit with him to see how he's calculated those numbers, because that's the budget he submitted. And if, if it's not being done on averaging our consumption over pet, three years, it will be, and we'll adjust those numbers accordingly.
And David, you're doing an excellent job answering the questions, and I appreciate that. If there's any administrators or staff that's able to help answer, please unmute and chime in as well.
Absolutely.
Anything else, Haley?
Um, I did send a message about the plowing contract and just trying to understand better what that cost is. I, I saw the Dodge Ram was asking for a plow, so I wasn't sure how much that's used. Is that vehicle kept at school, you know? And then what does a plowing contract entail as far as the grounds that we need to monitor and keep up with ourselves?
Right, so, yeah, so that's a, that's another good question, Haley. I just learned today how we, how we handle plowing. It is a contracted amount, and so I will break that out for you, but I think the plow is a replacement of a worn-out plow here, and we use that for the, the plow contract doesn't include the, the plow contract does, wouldn't include, you know, clearing doorways, clearing walkways and those kinds of things. So our maintenance department has some responsibility here for snow removal, even after the plow contractor has been in and done the, the roadways and the parking lots and all of that, so.
Um, is the, is the fuel that we use for UTC to bring the students there, is that reimbursed?
No.
Because I saw that broken out as a separate fuel cost and of $12,000. I thought that was kind of odd.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it's done that way, but no, it's our responsibility to get our students to and from UTC.
Yeah, and so as far as the transportation, they had $75,000, as I spoke to earlier on page two, and it was talking about repairs for bus maintenance, but on the previous page, it has the breakdown of all of those charges and a, some total in addition to that for bus repairs. So I just, if, I'll, I'll, we'll email, you know, simplify these, an email, please.
You give me the questions, and that gives me, it's a great reminder for me when I sit with Jason. Jason and Jamie and I are going to sit this week and go through the questions that we already have. We'll add yours to it, and then I will provide those out to whoever wants them.
Yeah, because there's also a lot for athletic busing. There's around $40,000 allotted for athletic busing. I hadn't seen that in the past.
I will say, and I, and you know, I come with a fairly clear, subtle lenses here, but I will say that, you know, Herman offers a, a very broad range of activities for their students, and so there's a significant amount of travel when you offer those opportunities, but I, we can. So one, one question that crossed my mind when you were speaking, and it's gone again now, but it'll come back. Our Haley, do you have something else?
Yeah, I didn't want to stop you in your thought.
It's too late, it's gone, but it'll be.
I was peeking at the contracted services. Looks like there was 600,000 in contracted services, but there's nothing to say what, what that could possibly be. So is it, is it health services? Is that IT? Like, what, 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 what might that be?
Which, which part of the budget is that under, Haley? Is that in?
I started out on a roll, putting every page number, and now I've slacked off. I don't know exactly where it is right this second. I just wrote it down in my notes.
Are, are you still on the facilities or transportation or?
Oh, I think it's, uh, I don't, I want to say it might have been around guidance somewhere in there, but apologize, I should have had the I can skip that one, if you want. Do you want me to ask a different one?
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to ask a different one? Because I, I can't tell you where, where it is.
Yeah, just, you go on, but when you find it, add it to your list of questions for me.
Okay. Um, I noticed the resource officer, we've, that contract never came before the school board, before it was signed, so we never really knew what that entailed. For instance, it looks like it's up to 137,000, which is far more than it's been in the past. And I also see where we're paying for the officer to come, whether it's board meetings or it's, you know, school events, and we're also paying specifically the SRO. Obviously, we hire other ones as well. So I wasn't sure what that contract actually entails and why it went up so much.
Well, the contract is obviously with the Penobscot County Sheriff's Department, and I, like you, was a bit taken aback when I first saw the number. And that's, that's in no way a statement about the services that our, our resource officer provides at all. I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be mistaken as saying he's not worth that money, but it does turn out to be a lot of money. And, and so I don't know that Jamie is with us, but I J, J, I don't know that Jamie is with us, but I, she could tell you or you probably have seen how much it is in the budget and if that's accurate. Because I know Jamie's been talking with the sheriff's department about that contract.
Hmm, yeah, cause I wasn't sure for how long it was, the contract was.
I think it's, I think it's going to be closer to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, so.
I, I am here. I am here. Um, the number that is in the budget is the number that I was given. Apparently, the um, I did not see the contract either originally, and we did not get an updated number for FY twenty-five after requesting one. Um, so that's why there's a little bit more of a jump, because it was in FY twenty-five at the same number as it was with FY twenty-six. Um, I did get a letter from, uh, Sheriff Morton, and the number that is in the budget is the amount that it would be for, um, quote unquote, calendar year twenty-five, and they also gave us what twenty-six would be? So it's in there with, um, the number of months for six months for twenty-five, six months for twenty-six. Based on what I was given by, uh, Sheriff Morton.
Unfortunately, the, the county operates on a January to December fiscal year, and the school obviously operates on a July one to, to June thirty, so it, it reaches two contracts.
I see. Um, I see. So are we doing that year by year, Jamie? Do you know?
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I can't speak to it because I haven't actually seen the original contract. I don't know if it's a one-year contract or a two-year, a three-year contract. The, um, letter that I received from Mr. Morton gave us twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven rates.
Jamie, what, do you have those rates in front of you?
I do. Twenty-twenty-five would be a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Twenty-twenty-six would be a hundred and forty thousand four hundred. And twenty-twenty-seven would be a hundred and forty-six thousand. And it would be, so from year to year to year, it would be five percent the first year, so over twenty-four would be a five percent increase. And then for twenty-six and twenty-seven, it's a four percent over the prior year for each of those years.
I mean, I, I was an outspoken advocate for the SRO, and I, you know, I hope that it has helped with decreased issues within the school and just the presence itself. Um, so that I, that's not so much the concern, is it? Is a lot of money. I'm glad that we're looking at possibly investing in more security for doors and, and classrooms and all of those things as well. Um, this coming year, but I just, when I see that and I also see there, I don't know if that includes all of the school board meetings they attend and those types of things, because there's an additional ten thousand dollars going out for all those services, so. Um.
Jamie, is that accurate?
Uh, let me see if I got it.
Build beyond our contract for?
We are, depending on what it is, um.
So if they come, and, and I understand because there are times, um, say they, they, in that contract, if it were me, I, you know, you'd say in, in addition to the school days, because it's a short day, right? You are gonna do so many, you'll do the all-school board meetings, and if, if you felt that was necessary, I, this is, I'm shooting off the hip. This is not like what I think should happen. Um, or or in addition to, you do these many football games, or whatever the games are that, you know, police officers are required, because the ten thousand dollars may not be going all to him, of course, but it, it's going to lots of officers. But I, I know when I read the payroll, that there are checks cut for games and stuff and other services that are not clearly a part of the contract, I guess.
They are not part of the contract. Any of those additional services where we have to have police presence at athletic events or what have you, those are billed uh, separately. I, I'm, I, I feel as though it's in addition to if uh, Deputy Boyd is there, I believe this is the, uh, we're getting billed for somebody else also being there. But I'm, I don't attend a lot of the games, so I'm, I'm not up to what's on police coverage, but I do know that we are charged separately for the athletic games.
Yes. Okay.
So just as a, a point of explanation here, because I, there are thirty-eight participants, and all thirty-eight participants probably aren't fully aware, uh, it pains me to, to say I'm not sure about that, but I, I need to, I need to make sure people understand. I've been in this seat for six weeks. Uh, and I've got six weeks left, uh, and so, um, the superintendent who has been here for a while would know many of those answers, I'm sure, but I, I, I've felt like I've been on a crash course for the last six weeks in Herman budget, Herman town issues, Herman school issues, so. Um, I just, uh, again, not making excuses, but I'm pretty proud of what I know after six weeks, but it certainly is not everything. Brian Walsh, are you here?
Yep, so David, those outside of the SRO's day, which is a full eight-hour day, when Deputy Boyd covers something, that is him as Penobscot County, not as him as our SRO. And so it's, it's up for grabs with who they assign. Obviously, we prefer when it's Steve, because we know him and he knows our kids. But anything beyond that eight-hour day is under Penobscot County. So before we had an SRO, we were paying for those, and those are not part of that contract. Those are separate. Whether it's Deputy Libby or whoever we end up with, it, it's based on who they can fill it with. So outside of his forty-hour regular work week, that's him taking extra duties and details to get, it's get, gets paid out of that other account, not through his SRO account.
And another thing to that is it's a minimum of four hours, so even if it's a two-hour game, it's a four-hour peg, and that's per Penobscot County. It's not per anything of our agreements. It's what they do.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, it's a kind of a weird one, or maybe seems trivial, but the shipping cost for athletic stuff is like the, the, what they're purchasing isn't very much, but the shipping cost is eight thousand, nine thousand dollars. Uh, it's odd to me.
So Haley, we've been, when we've talked to our, um, suppliers for next year, they are recommending certain amount, and I know Alex can talk to this on technology. Um, they, they are recommending a certain percentage based on the unknown when it comes to the items that are coming from, uh, China and other places. And so we're using the numbers the vendors are giving us, and they do seem high. I don't disagree. Alex can certainly talk to you on technology, but when I put in the laptops, and then he talked to the vendors, and they said, you better put in, I think it was twelve thousand dollars additional. Um, that's what we did, based, based on their forecast. Obviously, we, it's the unknown.
Okay, yes, that's a great answer. Um, as far as the PFAS stuff, I noticed that we were getting refunded from the state for that, but it's still in the budget. Is that one of those examples where we were talking about wanting to have the capital cost for, and then so you kind of eventually get the money back?
Yes.
So what happens with that is we end up with extra cash eventually, and then we end up with.
Well, we're not necessarily here. We, we, if you look at the revenue budget, we revenue miscellaneous revenue, you know, we put a number in there for. So we try to capture every place that we know we're going to have revenue. Um, and so, um, so it's not, yes, it, it certainly, we could have more revenue than we anticipated, but, um, but we do try to capture as much of the known revenues to, to offset the expenditures side of the budget, so that we're not asking for funds that we're not going to need, so.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, Haley, can, can you repeat that question one more time for me?
So when I look at something that we're going to purchase, if, and then it gets reimbursed by the state, well, whether it's the bus and or the PFAS filters or that system, and then I see that we get a reimbursement. Um, I was wondering, are we leaving that in the budget? It's funded through taxpayer dollars, but then it gets reimbursed as we get the money back, but it eventually could become like, um, yeah, revenue or extra money that it didn't need to be in the budget.
Okay, I, I can answer that if that's okay. Um, the bus, we have to budget for the bus because we ha, can't overexpend the bottom line of the budget. So the bus has to be in there. The bus revenue is in our subsidy line. It comes off from the two seventy-nine, so the, the amount that the state is going to reimburse us for the bus is offsetting a portion of that cost. The PFAS stuff, I, I am not aware that we're going to be reimbursed by anybody for buying the filters. I know that this was a concern when we were putting all of the, um, new PFAS equipment in, that the filters themselves were going to be costly. But I don't know that there is any fund that's going to be offsetting that.
I thought I saw it either in the audit or on DOE in the last few days, and I'll try to come, if I come across it again, I'll, I'll specifically, um, communicate it, because I was like, oh, we are getting reimbursed, okay.
You would have, you would have seen it in the FY twenty-four audit, because the project itself to install that equipment was done through a, a grant through the state. But the on, the ongoing maintenance and, uh, consumables, if you will, the filters and that sort of stuff, to my knowledge, is on the district. That is, there's no more state funding for that. The funding was purely to put the system in place.
Okay, that, thank you, cause that's when I saw that, the, uh, that made me question it. Thank you.
The other, the other question that didn't get asked, but I just wanna be clear. You know, we talk a lot about being reimbursed for the bus. We're reimbursed for a portion of the bus. So in, in the two seventy-nine we just received, they are showing reimbursement for the bus that was purchased this year, and they're showing that total cost is a hundred and thirty-four thousand four hundred and ten dollars. But that's a, that's a subsidizable cost, which is adjusted later in the two seventy-nine by the, the percentage that the state is covering of our costs. So, so we will get a percentage of that total bus cost back, and that percentage will be sixty-seven point five three percent. So I just, this, this, it's not a complete free ride, uh.
No pun intended.
No pun intended. It's, uh, but the state will end up paying sixty-seven and a half percent of the cost of that bus.
Yeah, and when I was looking at their, uh, I'm playing around on their website there, I noticed that it looked like the last bus was actually listed to the state as an additional, an addition to the fleet versus a replacement, and I thought we were on the replacement cycle. But that's how this was supposed to be working, but I know Mrs. Haggerty worked really closely on this, so she kind of knows the ins and outs way better than I do, but, uh, yeah, I don't know. So I just see those two.
That's the question I would have to ask for, um, Jason, as far as replacement versus I, I should know. I just signed the, the approval of accepting the state's offer to pay for another bus. And I'm pretty sure that one said replacement, but I, I don't know historically what those have been, but I will look.
Um, do, did we really need one? Cause it looked like this bus was two thousand nineteen. It's not very old.
No, I, I'm not sure what the two zero one nine, I don't believe it's a year. I, I don't think that's the, yeah. No, we're not, I don't believe we're putting any five-year-old buses out of our fleet.
Uh-huh, it's like, whoa, that's a.
Right.
Where it doesn't carry very many people if it's that new. That's a lot of my major questions. I don't, I don't wanna, I want other people to have a chance.
I'm giving you the opportunity to ask your questions, so if you had a couple more, keep going.
When I was looking at the audit and I see, um, how, how does money transfer out when it's not an expenditure? So it looked like the MLTI audit state that fifty-one thousand dollars came in, it wasn't expended, but it was transferred out. So where did it get expended? And I, I do remember the purchase, so I, but I just wasn't sure how that works. So when we're looking at the budget and we see that there's computers, and then we know it's in here as a budget item, but we're gonna get reimbursed for those.
Um, the devices that are in the, that you're seeing in the budget are not middle school devices, which are the only devices eligible for MLTI. The, those are the ones that we use MLTI for. MLTI for the middle school is in a completely different fund, and it's a reimbursement type basis. We pay for it and they, they give us the money back dollar for dollar. So I'm not sure which one you're seeing in the audit for the transfer out. If you wanna email it to David, we can look into it.
I agree, Jamie, on the emailing the questions. I think it's definitely helpful for the administration and David to be able to look at them that way, so absolutely. Any other questions Haley?
All right, I'm just reading through my notes, um. Guess that's it for now.
Anyone else on the school committee or town? Tony Reynolds, did you have anything?
No, I'm all set.
James, I know, I recognize, um, I recognize that you jumped on. Did you have any questions that you wanted to chime in?
Nope, all set.
Okay. Brian Benziano?
Uh, yeah, I mean, at this point, we really need to give the superintendent kind of where we wanna be as far as a budget for baseline for them to start working. Um, to give them a, a direction to go in what our baseline is. It, it's really good to look at the individual items, uh, as several of the questions that have been emailed, and then, um, several of the questions today have been. But at, at the, at the bigger level, we, we need to look at, as a school committee, what is our threshold that we wanna look at for an FY twenty-six budget and how we wanna come up to that number. Um, so it gives us a direction. It also gives the superintendent and the administration a direction in which we wanna go.
I definitely agree with you, cause I see lots of opportunities, um, to trim back still. So did anybody have any ideas on what that number should be?
I had more of a question, um. Because we haven't seen any of the payroll side of things, so we really don't know. I mean, we had some explanations, but nothing tangible show us that those numbers, you know, I, it's not that I don't trust it. I just, we can't, we haven't seen what that looks like, so we don't know what's been budgeted that's causing this huge influx. I mean, obviously, there's the, the wages and increase and insurance and all of those things, which we expected. Um, and in no way, shape or form am I looking to cut stuff. That's never my goal. It's just trying to balance where these jumps are, and I, I would assume they've been working on trying to find them. I mean, now I'm looking through and I see things I would take out or don't think are necessary, but then I turn around and they say, well, I don't see hardly any capital improvement projects in here. And, um, like, one of the major questions originally was, I still can't get my head around this undesignedated fund and how every year we're writing that we're using it, but then we're not expending it. And I know Mr. Benziano asked this last year, maybe he now understands it better than I am, but I still, I, I'm looking at the audit and it's saying it's not being moved, so it's like if we're not using it, okay, it's not growing, but it's also not going away, so it's still available. So where this nine hundred thousand dollars left is coming from? I, I still can't seem to grasp that.
I, I don't know how I can make it any clearer Haley. I, I've shared repeatedly the history over the last three years of the, the fund balance in FY twenty-four, the budget included revenues from, from the fund balance of one million dollars. What happens is, is that you don't know how much of that one million dollars is used until the, the fiscal year is complete and the audit is complete. So when the FY twenty-four fiscal year was complete and the audit was complete, it was clear that we had used eight hundred and, I don't have the number right in front of me, but I should, because we've talked about this a few times.
Eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-six.
There you go. Um. There you go. Um, of that one million that we use to fund the budget. So, so so then we go into the FY twenty five school year and you again, I, I uh have, have shared this so many times, I should know the numbers off the top of my head.
One million, three hundred and ninety nine thousand, eight hundred and forty eight.
Okay, so, so you, that's what you chose to use. So Brian, run, Brian, you've obviously got that in front of you because I know you don't have those numbers memorized.
Of course I do.
So Brian, why don't you, why don't you just run through, you've got in front of you what I've shared with, with the board, right?
Yes.
So start with FY twenty four when we started with three million, one hundred something, okay?
Yeah, so fund balance in uh, in June of twenty three was uh, three point one million dollars. The fund balance, including revenue in FY twenty four that we used was one million. The actual fund balance used to support the twenty four budget was eight hundred and twenty seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty six dollars. The fund balance at the conclusion of June, of June twenty four was three million, one hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty eight dollars. Minus the eight hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars from FY twenty four gave us a total fund balance at, at the beginning of the FY twenty four year, I'm sorry, the conclusion of FY twenty four year of two million, three hundred and forty three thousand and fifty two dollars. Fund balance used to subsidize or support the FY twenty five budget that we're using right now was one million, three hundred and ninety nine thousand, eight hundred and forty eight dollars. Leaving the unassigned fund balance, or I'm sorry, the fund balance at seven hundred and seventy thousand, ninety four dollars.
But when I look at the audit and it's showing that that isn't moving, that's where I'm getting confused.
Well, Jamie's right there if she wants to help, but it has moved because the fund balance at the beginning of twenty four now we're, we've used, you know, one point over one point five million of it and we're down to seven hundred thousand dollars plus whatever the, you know, the two hundred thousand dollars we had from the carry forward of this past year, which puts us at that nine hundred and forty three thousand dollar mark, which is unassigned fund balance, but within the five percent state uh requirement.
Jamie, and don't to cut you off one more. What did you just say? You just said two hundred what? Carry forward?
Two hundred thousand dollars more or less, it's like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from ninety uh FY ninety four. FY twenty four.
And that wasn't put into the science reserve because why?
There was zero money put into reserves.
But why? But, but there was a one article.
Don't confuse, don't confuse reserves with fund balance.
I'm not, I, if we had any leftover money from that fiscal twenty four budget that was supposed to be set aside and put into that science reserve so that we could work on that project and help fund that.
Can I interrupt, please? Because I think we've got two different things happening here. So Haley, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe what your correct question truly is, is why you aren't seeing in the actual ex uh line for carry forward revenue column, eight hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. In the audit. And, and it, it's just saying that the fund balance has decreased by that much. Am I correct?
Um, partially, yes.
Okay, so we don't actually record a number in the actual column of the carry forward. Think of it like at home with your savings account. You would not transfer the money from your savings to your checking and then include those monies on your tax return. Those are revenues that we already have. The change in fund balance, whether it goes up or down in any given year is the difference between actual revenues and actual expenditures. If you take in more revenues over the course of the year than you put out in expenditures, it adds to your fund balance. It makes your fund balance larger. If you spend more than you take in, like we did in FY twenty four, it reduces your fund balance by that amount. But we don't ever record an actual, those are revenues that are already received. We would be double booking a revenue and it would show a zero change to fund balance. So that's, that's issue number one. Issue number two, when you're looking at the budget column and how much we actually expended versus how much we actually budgeted, the budget is the plan. If the budget is what we said we were going to put out for expenditures. So if we, if we used, I'm just gonna throw eighteen million out there, but the budget was nineteen million. A million dollars of that went unspent, but those are not a million dollars that actually go anywhere. Because it's only the net of the actual money coming in and the actual money going out that are the, that affect fund balance.
But it's a, it's still um available funds that goes to an undesignedated amount.
It is not. So when you look at your revenue budget column and your expense budget column, those numbers equals zero because we have to have a budgeted bound, uh, sorry, balanced budget. In the end, it is only actual to actual that closes out. We may take in more in revenues than we budgeted. We wouldn't, we can't go over on the expense side, but in the end, it's the net of those two things.
So, and I'll probably say this, you know, the council member uh, who may or may not be on now said, you can move money with the stroke of a pen. So that's what makes me wonder. Not saying that there was ever anything wrong with that, but when you're saying it has to equal zero at the end of the year.
No, no, the budget, in order to have a balanced budget, your revenues and your expenditures have to be the same amount.
Yes, I understand.
The only concept of the budget column. At the end of the year, it is the actual column that closes out to fund balance.
Yeah.
And this might be something that's easier to show you in person, like when we have reports in front of us.
Okay.
This is probably something easier done that way than to try and explain it without visuals.
Okay.
And the other point, again, I just want to be clear, we're talking an undesignedated fund balance, which is different from the, the designated reserve funds that we have on deposit with the town of Herman. And so designated reserve funds are a little different than undesignedated reserve in that the only way money can go into a designated reserve is by a vote of the taxpayers. The taxpayers can say, you know, we want to take X number of dollars and put it into the facilities repair reserve. But same token, the only way money can be spent from those reserves is by a vote of the taxpayers. So at a town meeting, they vote to take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the repair reserve fund to pave the, the driveway at uh, of the parking lots at certain schools. Whatever, but those funds flow into and flow out of by virtue of a vote of at, at town meeting time. So.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we did vote on that. So if there were funds that were left over, so to speak, the, the voters did vote on that to be moved into the science reserve, which should have taken place and I just can't seem to get that.
That's probably a question for the town of Herman.
Yes, I, I ask them a lot. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
But back to where we were, which is I think we were on a good track to, to uh, to bring this to closure is that that you have to determine at this point, the board and this is, I believe where Brian was going, Brian, um, is that, you know, we're at a point where we still have work to do to make sure that the expenditures that we have in the budget are accurate. We, you know, we, that they aren't inflated, obviously not intentionally, but there's not any fat per se left in this budget. We've, we've cleared it. And then the question becomes, so how do we fund this budget? So we know what our state, or we know what we think the state of Maine is going to send us. There's no guarantees with that until the legislature adjourns. But we know we have a, we have a preliminary number of state revenue, which is the largest piece of our revenue picture. And um, we know what our other revenues will be, but we still have a hole. That's the, the point. It stands right now at two point four million dollars. Now, are we gonna continue to work that down? Yes. But at some point, we've got to decide how you fill the rest of that hole. And is that, there's only two ways to do it, using your fund balance if you have it. Or asking the taxpayers to increase the, the support for schools. Those are your two choices. So I should say there's a third choice is you can continue to cut your budget, but we're at a point where I believe you're at a point with this budget that the, the remaining adjustments to be made are, are far less than what you will need to, to do to make this balance. So your other option is you have to look at cutting programs, cutting staff and whatever. And I'm not proposing that in any way. And I know the board is not at that point yet, but there does need to be, we do need to be thinking about what is that, what is the appetite for the budget increase? Because the budget will increase. There was over a million dollars in salary and benefits increases. Those are negotiated. Those aren't something we picked out. Those aren't please, wh- wish lists. Those are the result of negotiated contracts. So there's over a million dollar increase in this budget just in those lines. So that's the conversation that the board will need to continue to have.
And David, that's a valid point that you bring in. None of us want to have to cut staff. But when we look and, and these numbers were provided to me, when we look at historical numbers of Brian Benziano helped me out um years ago, there's not really a huge increase in the student body. But there's a drastic increase in staff. So what additional? Help, help me understand that.
Yeah, so I was looking at the ED two seventy nine, zero over year out to twenty nineteen. And there was uh, up to seventeen additional staff and teachers on the ED two seventy nine for the same number of students that we have, you know, six years later. So, I mean, I think that is a consideration we need to have when we're looking at the budget of what are, what have we done with those positions for the same number of student body that we have now? Um, and then the, the ones that really jump out are the, the positions and, and not the, not the specific position, but the overall use of the additions from COVID. We had, uh, I think it was two teachers, a couple of ed techs, hall monitor, nurse. Um, those were all positions that were added at the conclusion of um the COVID money of, you know, how are these positions being used and how can they be possibly leveraged um via attrition or other means to help our budget? Cause we're obviously at a point where we're twenty nineteen student levels, uh, but much higher on employee levels. And I think that does need to be looked at.
So Brian, you, I, I agree. I just need direction from the board that that's what you would like us to, to provide you with as we move forward. Is that listing of where, where our staff has grown. That doesn't necessarily mean that that is where we would recommend to reduce staff, but are there areas, I think what you're asking us is to, is to come back to you with other areas where we believe that we can find efficiencies in our staffing model.
Yeah, a- and I guess I would approach it um this way. Is, I, I think it's only fair for us to have a bottom line number that we're looking for and how do we come up with it? And uh, you know, i- in the absence of anybody else on the committee using a number, I, I'll throw a number out there, which is, you know, literally on a yellow sticky that I've, I've worked out. And that was using last year's budget of a nineteen seven. And the fact that four hundred thousand of that was uh special projects, which brings us to a nineteen point three million dollar budget. And then the FY twenty six personnel increases, which have been identified, which is a one point one million do- dollar budget. So that brings us to a, a propose, my book, you know, my starting point for a twenty twenty six budget as a twenty point four million dollar budget. And the question back to, uh, I guess for the administration is what services or expenses above and beyond a flat line of this year is required? So rather than us going in and, and trying to find the, you know, eleven pages that were sent as questions, maybe we should approach it as what is it that is need, that you know, an absolute necessity for an increase? If left, if the administration given the guidance of you're flatlined on the services and a one point one million dollar uh personnel increase because of accepted wages, wages and other um benefits as a starting point. And I, I leave that back as the committee as a discussion point for us to work often.
Can you repeat how many, I mean, it was just a very few amount of positions that you said, yet you said that the enrollment went down. So when I, my first instinct is class sizes to the teacher ratio and if you ever, or you reduce teachers, you increase class sizes and, and the morale goes down, behaviors go up. I mean, that's just a, I don't, I don't support that recipe. Sounds, that doesn't sound.
That, that's not where I was going. I started with a flat line of the, of the uh supply and services budgets that we've looked at. And in a acceptance of the one point one million dollar increase required to keep the current personnel levels. And that would bring us to a twenty point four million dollar budget. And where, where would that be with the town council? So we have a point of reference. Cause right now, we don't even have a point of reference.
I, I just still see so much that can be trimmed down to more of an actual with some inflation on, on on the supply side.
I agree with you. Absolutely, Haley. Hundred percent agree with you. Um, and I don't want to tell them, you know, are the esports chairs really necessary, you know, different items there? But at the end of the day, I think, and I know what I'm hearing Brian say is we really should be looking at everything, right? Because if we're looking at this budget, we, we should look at everything. And we're not saying that, that we want to cut. That's not it at all. We're just saying, help us understand.
I don't, I've never seen a school not have entire budget to look at. It's, it's very bizarre.
Haley, it, I'm glad they don't have personnel on it. Dave's doing us a favor by not putting every personnel line on there. One, it's incredibly difficult to read. It's nearly impossible to understand. So if you want to look at expense, here we go. And, and there's nothing that me or you can do on the personnel side to squeak numbers out of it. It's, we either say we want to cut positions or we don't. And if I have the personnel in front of me, then now it can it, now it gives me a, a information that I really shouldn't have. So Mr. Walker, I'm glad you didn't send me the personnel piece of it because you give me the total number because that's really all I can affect. So if I can't affect it, something like personnel, I probably shouldn't see.
Well, I, I think that, that you trust us enough to, if, if we have a target, you know, we, we will come back with recommendations for you ultimately. Obviously you have to make those decisions, but none of us would say that we can't look. And, and what I don't want to do is, is start a stir of, you know, that there is going to be massive uh personnel cuts because that's not the case. But there's attrition every year, people retiring, people moving on, whatever. So we would a- attempt to do anything that we would could do as humanely as possible because that's who we are. So, and we're not talking about huge across the board cuts in, in staffing. We're talking about rightsizing our staff to fit our current student load and student needs. And that's what you're asking us to do and that's what we'll do.
I just don't feel like if things were in the budget and they were, and, and that made it a nineteen million dollar budget and those tasks and things were completed, then those numbers should be minus this coming forward. So you're, you're, you know, and Brian has gone round and round about starting at zero, so to speak, minus salaries and all those wages. And then you start from the beginning and it just feels like that's not what's happening.
That is what I just said. I said that in the last budget, we had nineteen point three million of operational.
Yes.
And then we put into that an additional four hundred and I forget four hundred and ten thousand dollars of other. And I'm saying remove the four hundred and ten other, which was which are those projects that you're referencing Haley? Which brings us to back to the nineteen point three. You add the one point one million that is needed for current personnel, which brings us to a twenty point four million dollar budget for the administration to look at as as guidelines, there is guidance. I think we, if we go to the town discussing the increase in wages as one of the drivers, it is a very reasonable thing to look at. The town might not say they can't stomach twenty, a twenty million dollar budget, but we don't know that yet. So let's trim it down to where we've said we've flat lined our expenses and we've got an increase in personnel because of expected wages or known wages and expected health insurances, dental insurances and other benefits. In which I see that Mr. Walker and I assume Jamie provided those numbers back this afternoon. So, you know, I think it's very reasonable to go back to the town and say that there's a three hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase to our health insurance bill this year. And and that's driving the one point one million. But it gives us and it gives the administration a starting point.
I I guess I would focus mostly, I mean, on where I saw was a lot with athletics and a lot of inflation with the facility side of things and yet no real major projects. I mean, the door things I fully support that. I think that's a great thing and it's a safety thing. So I'm not really worried about that cost. It's it's more. Yeah.
No, the door thing is a is a major expense. And I support the door thing on premise on dollars. I I question it. I mean, I think I figured it out to be in excess of sixty eight thousand dollars or so total. And my response, you know, has been multiple times that there are there are likely other venues or other opportunities to get money for that. So those are those are areas that need to be explored that I don't think we've had the time to fully dig into yet. But we know that there's homeland security in other grants out there that can help with the door project. So I don't think we should cut the door project. I think we should look at a different way to resource the door project because it's needed.
Agreed.
So Brian, just to be clear, the number you've thrown out, not not as a final place, but the number you just as a as a place to start is twenty million forty thousand. Two zero zero four zero 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 zero, correct?
No, sir. Two zero four zero zero, not forty thousand, but four hundred.
Oh, that's much better.
I mean, you can use forty if you want, but four hundred, I mean, I'm just, I'm taking last year's operational budget as we discussed it and we it was discussed with the administrators that are here today that we had a nineteen point three million dollar operational budget and then four hundred thousand dollars worth of add-ons. So the nineteen point three million plus the one point one million on additional personnel costs brings us to twenty point four million. And that gives gives a framework for the administration to you know, to to come back and say absolutely not, or these are some areas we got to cut.
How many other schools in the area have full time SROs? I know Brewer does, I believe. I could be wrong. You know, their student population or maybe Jamie might roughly.
They're slightly larger than Brewer, not not much. I think they're in the fifteen hundred student range and they have two SROs, one in each, or let me rephrase that. The last I knew, they had two SROs, one in each building.
Like high school and middle school or?
Brewer only has two schools, a pre K eight school and a high school, so they had one in each building.
Okay.
And and Dave, by no means do I think that's the solution. I I recognize that that brings us still to about a two million dollar deficit. Because of how this is, you know, we we've used one point four carry forward from last year and then a one point one increase due to personnel this year. We're going to have still a two million dollar or a one point five million dollar, depending on state funding increases deficit. So by no means do I think that this is this is the silver bullet. I just want to be able to have a starting point for us.
With that being said, can we look at cutting the bus or the buses? I mean, we can make it a year or two without them, correct?
I I would, I would not recommend cutting the bus that the state is going to pay sixty seven percent of because you don't know that going forward, the state would be able to continue to if you put that purchase off a year, the funding may not be there a year from now to purchase that bus. So I would think you would take the opportunity to purchase the state supported funded bus. The second bus that's in here, yes, I think you need to take a look at that and say, would it be nice? Would it be used every day? Could we use it? But it's like in your home budget, there are things you can't afford that would be nice that you would use every day would be good. So there's that. There were two big ticket items that take the non payroll side of this budget above what you budgeted last year. They are that second bus and the hundred and seventy five thousand dollars worth of paving at the middle school. You know, I I think that the hundred and seventy five thousand dollars worth of paving at the middle school needs to be looked at by your facilities committee because it's just part of a much bigger picture of your ongoing expenses that you need to be considering for maintaining your buildings. You have a a brand new updated assessment done by Carpenter Associates on the status of your buildings and and I think Tony has added it up, but if you took a look at all of our priority one items that they identified that should be addressed soon, when I say soon, in the next few years, it's it's a lot of money. Tony, if you're still there, throw that number out.
Yeah, I'm still here. It was almost twelve million dollars.
So so I think the facilities committee needs to take a look at the other pieces, that hundred and seventy five thousand dollars worth of paving, somebody mentioned, you know, can that be done? Could we finance that over a couple of years? Could we, you know, can we put money in the budget this year to add to the facilities repair reserve with an eye to doing that a year from now? I mean, there are some options. If you take a look at those two big ticket items, then your non payroll side of the budget is going to be less than or certainly not more than what you did a year ago. So that, you know, I think we've and we still have some the questions you've asked, the good questions regarding non payroll expenditures, and we're going to sift through those and make sure we've got this right. But but then then it's the only other place to go is your payroll expenses. Or how much, what is this, what is the appetite for the town to increase the support for schools? So I think the next reasonable step is for us to take a look at the the take the same fine tooth comb that we've taken through the the non payroll accounts. We need to take through the payroll accounts to make sure that there's there's nothing there that we can't justify and support to you. So we have not done that. It was pretty clear at the first meeting of this group that we wanted to start with the non payroll side first. We recognize the value of the of of the employees that we have, and we certainly don't want to start there. But it it's, I think we're at that point and I'm hearing you say would you would like me to work with the administrators to to give that same close look that we gave to non payroll side and we'll continue to look at the non payroll side. But to take a look at the payroll side of the the budget as well. Because before you can, before you can straight face, go to the town council or to the town for an increase in support for schools, you've got to feel comfortable as a board that you have combed this budget completely and that we can we can support what we're asking for, regardless of what that bottom number is. So so whether it's two hundred dollars or two million dollars, that's you've got to be comfortable with that. And I I know you won't, you're not going to be comfortable until we've done the same process, looking at staffing as we have with that. That's fine. That's that's a normal part of this process. Not meant to strike fear in the hearts of our employees in any way, shape or manner. It's just a normal annual process that we do. Like any business, you take a look at staffing to make sure you're adequately staffed to serve your clients. In our case, it's students.
Mr. Walker, I'll ask you to, and I know I put it in the message to you, but I say it for the group. I I ask you to look at the extracurricular and co curricular as 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 programs because it includes personnel payroll as well as other other expenses. So if you could look at those so that when we talk about programs, you know, you've got the coach or the advisor plus whether it's travel, transportation, field maintenance, all the other additional expenses that go along with that. If if we could kind of have that as a menu of in twenty nineteen, what did we have for extracurricular activities to twenty twenty five? Because we're at the same, you know, thirteen thirty nine, thirteen thirty six number of twenty nineteen. Well, where are we with the co curricular, extracurricular activities? Because we obviously want to expand our enrichment opportunities for our students. But it comes at a price, so I think we need to have that information together.
So so we are scheduled to meet again on the twenty seventh of this month. And so I think we have our work laid out for us here.
I have a couple of things I, one, as far as extracurricular activities, when I see things in the budget that I know that the students, my son's an athlete and has fundraised money for, say, the helmets and those other projects and every single pretty much that I know of, they have, they raise those athletic funds for those for helmets, for those purposes, why aren't we utilizing that to purchase those items as they were projected to the all the elderly that receive, you know, these text messages of, hey, I need twenty five dollars or whatever. We're raising money for helmets. Okay, well, your ticket sales at the booths, you know, there's twelve thousand dollars, say football raised. Why isn't that money being used to buy the things that they're saying they're going to use it for?
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the revenue budget that I gave you, there are the the receipts from those events that you speak of. They're the majority of those, if not all of them, are at Herman High School. I don't think we're charging to to watch middle school soccer games or whatever. But so there is a revenue number in there from those gate receipts.
Yes, for those, but I know the fundraising that goes into the student athletic funds that is supposed to be for jerseys, helmets, pads and all these things that they claim that they're raising money for, well, I don't see it being used that way.
I have no idea about fundraising that has happened, but I certainly will ask questions.
David, I mean, we did get copies of the high school activity report and you can see a lot of the different deposits within there, and that was one of the first times we've looked at that at that level, but
Right.
David, do you have what you need from us for now? So that two weeks from today, when we're meeting as the finance committee, you'll be coming back to us with additional numbers and then we'll have the full committee meeting that following Monday night.
So, yes, certainly we'll have answers to the questions. Haley is going to send me her list. I, you know, I've got a shortlist left from Danielle and and Brian's
Not short.
Brian's Brian's novel of of questions.
Yeah, it wasn't short. Sorry about that.
It was fun. It was fun.
Brian, my list was short. He was referring to that my list was short and that yours.
Right, right.
Brian, I thought you were yelling to your kids or dogs, so that's why I muted you. I apologize.
So 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 yes, we will. I would suggest we start there with, you know, finishing up filling in those blanks and then we also will begin to talk about the rest of the story, so.
In in regards to personnel, Mr. Walker, when we meet meet next, could you have just based off an attrition? I'm aware of three teachers' positions, just based off into a tradition. That would be the two that announced their retirement on this last school committee meeting.
Right.
And the one position that had not been filled over at the middle school as of yet. Just based off in those three positions, could we have an update on the personnel costs to see what that that adjustment alone would do for us?
Well, so the person retiring is a is a teacher, right?
Yes, there were two teachers, one elementary school, one middle school.
So my sense is are you asking, are you saying we don't fill those positions?
If we start looking at people, if we start looking on the on the payroll side of things, if we just attrit those three positions, what would be the overall impact?
So so again, you know, I I certainly would attempt to, if we get to that point, that certainly would attempt to address any reduction in force through attrition. That's the that's not only is that the most humane thing to do, but it also is is the the most inexpensive way to do that. Because if you don't, then you could be faced with unemployment expenses, whatever, that quickly reduce the savings that you've tried to gather from a from a reduction in staff. So yes, certainly we can start the
Does anybody else from the committee have a comment on the number that I threw out? I mean, I I put together the thought, but I haven't heard anybody else discuss it. Is there anybody else out there on the committee that would want to?
Brian, have you done the, have you done a percentage of of what that would, what's the percentage increase from this year's adopted budget to the twenty million four hundred thousand dollar number you threw out?
That comes out to be a five point seven increase overall. And that's just using, you know, the first decimal point, so I
Right.
It's, you know, but it's an overall five point seven increase.
Ron Murphy, I don't believe Josh is on. Did you guys have anything that you wanted to add to anything that we've discussed so far?
Thank you, Stephanie. This is Ron. There's been a lot talked about tonight and I know I I feel kind of bad for Dave. He's kind of thrown into this here in a in a real hurry. But I know he's been through it in most of his adult life, so I think he can handle it all right. I like Brian's idea on the twenty million four four hundred thousand, I think I heard that figure right. And I know Dave is going to go with his staff and look at a lot of things, items that need to be cut out. There was a lot of stuff that Haley had that I thought was really good because I had some of them saying questions. So I certainly think he's got enough to look at and go through and hopefully by our next meeting, he'll have he'll have a lot of that worked out. Is is as far as you know, if that's the number we end up with, twenty million four four hundred thousand, that really seems reasonable to me. I'm just one guy on the on the council. But I think everybody on on the council understands that things, things, things are going to going to rise as far as overall budgets. So it seems like it's workable, but we'll let's let's wait until Dave gets everything worked through and and we'll go from there. If that gives you any any help on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know how to raise my hand on this thing. You're fine. Go ahead. A couple of things for the staffing, when one of those positions was a school nurse and I think that it is essential that each school continue to have a school nurse, the secretaries. Think that it is essential that each school continue to have a school nurse. The secretaries are incredibly busy, have to deal with all sorts of things. And I think, you know, asking them to operate out of their scope. To triage kids and deal with all of those things. So I am a huge advocate of making sure each school, when I look at those nursing reports every month, they are turning over. So many students every single day throughout their office. Students have more medical needs from diabetes, seizures. All gamut of issues. I really think it is essential that each school continue to have their own nurse. The other reason of looking at payroll is because sometimes, as I've found on the last few years. There are placeholder numbers that are. Placed in there for staff that aren't teachers that are raises. And so. When those come to the board and they ask, well, but there's this huge window in there that's placed in. I'll say huge. I don't, Jamie's going to be mad at me. But I'm just saying there's numbers in there for, so. Those are things that you look at. It's like, how much was allotted for those numbers? Because that becomes. Part of the overall payroll equation. So. Don't be mad at me, Jamie. I'm just saying.
No, but if I could just say. All of the pay and benefits that are calculated. The majority of them are going to be straight off from the contracts that have already been negotiated. The only placeholder that we have is for the contract that we we are on a rolling cycle with with our contracts that we have a contract in negotiation. Every year. So that that group of people, whatever year it might be, that group of people is the only. Placeholder that's in the budget, and it's only because we don't know exactly what that number is going to be. But everything else is pulled directly from the union contracts.
Okay.
And there certainly are no physicians. That are in that are ghost physicians in the budget. There are people in all of those spots. Now, they may be a long-term sub that's filling the slot because the teacher is not there for whatever reason, but there's a person being paid. To teach or to provide whatever service they provide. There's no ghost. Numbers. So. The the other thing is, I just want to clarify Brian's. Math is twenty million four hundred thousand. If you go year over year. Last year's budget without. Last year's total budget, nineteen million seven hundred and thirty nine thousand seven oh seven, actually this year's current budget. Compared to twenty million four hundred thousand. Is is a three point three percent increase. Now, I know Brian is talking about backing out some numbers and I need to. Sit with Brian to better understand. That. But but budget over budget. A twenty million. Four hundred thousand dollar budget is a three point three four. Or three five. Three point three five percent increase over this year's budget. I can tell you that your personnel costs. Exceeded the three point three five percent by a huge amount, so. We'll do our best, but. I think you have to truly look at budget over budget. Brian and I can hammer that out, arm wrestle, we can do whatever, but but.
Well, if you don't, if you don't use my math and you say year over year, you're instead of using the nineteen point three, you'd be using a nineteen point seven. So we're looking at somewhere between a twenty point four million and a twenty point eight million. And that's why I put twenty point four as a starting point. Is where we we need to have our target from.
True. So but that starting point is a three point three percent increase.
Yes, understood. Yep.
But. One one more thing, but you but you actually only spent eighteen million eight hundred and seventy five or whatever. So you guys are starting at a budget that we didn't even fully expend. So I just, I, the math. Why aren't you starting at? Nineteen million or eighteen eight seventy five?
You have no idea what was will expend by by June thirtieth. Yet.
Well, I'm talking last year.
That's I'm not comparing it to last year's. I'm comparing it to this year's. I'm comparing the next year's number to this year's number. The approved budget for this year was nineteen million seven hundred and thirty nine dollars, seven hundred and seven and six cents, so. That's what we're comparing. That's where I get the three point three percent increase to get to twenty million four hundred thousand.
I want to give Tony Reynolds an opportunity to speak. Tony, I think you were trying to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Stephanie. I get just a couple of things. Patty Durin pre-bought our oil this year from Dice Ash and saved quite a bit of money. We do have money in our fuel reserves, so if David suggests. Not a great idea, but cut some of the money out of that if he wanted to, because we would have a backup plan. If we did run short, we could take it out of the fuel reserves. The second thing is, I I'm not a hundred percent backing Brian's numbers, but I know we do have to cut, but I would trust David and our principals. To come up with the best number for us to go forward. Then we should take a look at it and then figure out if that's our plan of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Anything else, David? I think you've got plenty of work and like somebody said, we're so fortunate. Have you.
All the fun anyone could ask to have on a snowy day.
Oh, we.
Take a vote before we leave, Stephanie, we could take a vote on how many people think today was a good call not to have school or not, but that's okay. Either way.
No, the entire state shut down. That's okay. I actually do. I will make a motion to adjourn and I would encourage everybody to email their questions because David, I believe that's most helpful for you. Haley, please follow up with your questions because they were excellent. Do I have a second to adjourn?
Second.
Any discussion? And we have to say all those in favor, yes verbally, please, because we're remote, so I, Brian?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so David will need to let Jody know that we adjourned at five thirty six P M.
I've got the minutes right here. I'm taking them as we speak.
Awesome.
What'd you say the exact time was, Stephanie?
Five thirty six.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. Adjourn.